For the Select Board to provide some direction input regarding the recently approved moratorium for the, Jeremy, if you have any terms that are incorrect, please correct me, the moratorium with respect to the outer and coastal harbor regions of our waterways here. That moratorium at the moment is 180 days and we're getting close toward the, closer toward the end of that six month moratorium and we just need to proceed and process. Basically, our objective today is to, is for us to define, Select Board, what information we want, we need, we think we want investigated and by whom, and preferably when, so that we can bring this to the table for final judgment on the moratorium or whether to even extend the moratorium. If we extend the moratorium, it has to be for an additional six months. We can't do less.
Correct, and it cannot be for something different than what was already voted on.
Correct.
You can't shrink it down to be, just say, focus on piers.
So with that, Jeremy has provided us with, with a packet information on, well, a map of the, to make sure we understand what the outer harbor is and what the coastal harbor is in terms of a geography, in addition to various documents that apply to the regulation of piers, docks, and floats. And Jeremy, maybe a good start would be to, just in two sentences on each one, describe what the zoning ordinance, not the detail of it, what it regulates, what the, what the other ordinance, the harbor ordinance regulates, just generally, so by, by topic. In other words, the physical restraints of docks and piers are in this document, the, in the regulations, that, that kind of thing, just to summarize for everybody, for all of us.
Sure, so in the harbor ordinance, as in the shoreline zoning section of our zoning ordinance, there are kind of criteria on, oh, length of the pier, width of the pier, height of the pier, things like that, and those, I would call those kind of more development standards, and that's, those are both contained in the harbor ordinance as well as in the shoreline zoning section of the zoning ordinance. And then on top of that, you have, in the harbor ordinance, you have some review criteria, which are, obviously they're objective, and you need to, the harbor committee reviews those, and the planning board has review criteria that they need to review under the site plan ordinance of the town, and again, those are more objective criteria that need to be reviewed, and the applicants have to provide documentation that the planning board and the harbor committee can utilize to make their decision. Does that help, Bob?
Yeah, very much so.
And I could go into a little detail on what those, what they speak to, if you want, when I say objective criteria, it's like-
Just in general, I don't want to read the-
Navigation, for instance, impact on, I think one says, impact on fisheries, there's a whole host of things, but those are, again, in, contained in the harbor ordinance and in separate standards in the site plan section of our zoning ordinance. They also need to comply, the site plan section applies too, so there's submittal requirements that are needed to be complied with on a submittal. I will say that there has been some, I don't want to say confusion or about process, the town has had a certain process, done a certain way to review these piers and these types of structures traditionally, and again, I've been here with the town for almost, working on five years, but as I understand, for the last couple of decades at least, piers, when they would get reviewed at the town level, they would go to the harbor committee for review, and then they would go to the planning board for review. The harbor committee doesn't make an approval, they make a recommendation, or they don't make a recommendation, that goes to the Select Board, and then the planning board reviews it, reviews their criteria and their ordinance requirements, and then that then goes, gets forwarded onto the Select Board as well, for the Select Board to be the final kind of arbiter on the pier. There is some disagreement or a little bit of confusion, I think that could be clarified in the ordinance, so that there is more succinct explanation on what the process is. I do think, and I've had the conversation with Bill Kelly about this multiple times, I do think that what is a little odd in the harbor ordinance is that your review criteria as the Select Board is the same review criteria as the harbor committee, and that's, that's a little odd, because, you know, you don't want them to match up, because what if the planning board, and similar to the planning board, the planning board reviews something and they find something meets all these standards, the harbor committee says it meets all these standards, then it goes to the Select Board, and you have two committees, a board and a committee that makes a recommendation, a board that makes an approval, sends it off to the Select Board, and the Select Board says, well, we don't, we don't, don't agree. I think you really need to clarify and make some kind of separation or some, define a little better on what the Select Board reviews, in my opinion, I think Bill Kelly would say the same thing, because, you know, if two boards reviewed something and they find something, they found, based on all the evidence, all the materials that were submitted, meets these certain review criteria, and then it goes to the Select Board with the same criteria, and the Select Board has the same evidence, but the Select Board finds in a different, you know, finds in a different way. I think that needs to be clarified better in the ordinance, and maybe separate what you actually review, because I think from the Select Board perspective, it should be more policy, if you will, and look at things like navigation and say density of piers in certain areas, those are certainly, I think, more policy types of questions than specifically stated in zoning ordinance review criteria, if that makes sense. Does that help?
No, it doesn't, because we continue to say that it's extremely confusing. I agree with the statement that the past practice has been what you're saying, that it's, it's gone to the harbor committee, and then it has gone to the planning board, and then it's been going to the Select Board. The ordinance itself is very clear that it shouldn't do that. The ordinance says very clearly that the harbor committee reviews it within a certain number of days, and then it goes to the Select Board for approval, disapproval, or approval with conditions, and then the planning board goes through the site plan review process. And to me, that system that's in the ordinance makes perfect sense, because the Select Board is in the position of, I agree with the thing about the criteria being the same does add this, this kind of complexity to it, but it's the planning board's job to do site plan review and to make sure that any conditions are implemented, and so it is the Select Board at the policy level, and, and then the planning board is reviewing an approved project essentially, to make sure that it, that it complies. By doing it the way that it's been done, it creates the impression when it comes to the Select Board that it's already an approved project. It's, it, it doesn't, it's very, very clear in the ordinance, the order of things, so I don't know, just because we've been doing things wrong for the past couple decades, I don't understand why we're saying it's confusing.
I mean, I will say, I, I don't necessarily wholeheartedly agree with that, and I appreciate what you're saying. I will, you read the, the, the site plan review section for, on the planning board, and it says that the planning board can review and should take comments from the harbor committee review. It doesn't say as, and the Select Board's review, it specifically says, it just says the harbor committee's comments shall be forwarded to the planning board, it doesn't say anything about the Select Board either. The, and the ordinance also says that the, the, in essence, what can be appealed on this is the Select Board review is the final kind of arbiter that gets appealed, so that would happen normally at the end, and-
If that's in the site plan section of the ordinance, then that's different than the overall section of the ordinance, I mean-
Well, we've got to, we-
This speaks to be, things need to be clearer, and I think that's, that's my point.
I was going to say, Sophie wanted to say something. I think, I think that there are a couple of levels of information that the board needs. One is recommendations on the process, and what the process should be, and then we would adhere to it. I, I believe there is confusion, because what you said, Allison, we've been doing it differently than what the documents suggest, so right there is a conflict, that needs to be corrected, one way or another.
Corrected, and I think, I know you want to say something, Sophie, I just want, if I can, really quickly, I think it's important to, we didn't identify that in the moratorium language, so I think that should happen concurrently with addressing the moratorium language.
Right, they're connected, I agree with you. Sophie, your turn.
Thank you. So I, I think we're already diving into a lot of details, and I would like to take it back a few steps, just to understand, also for Tom's benefit, because it's his first workshop, what is the agenda? What are the things that we want to review in the ordinance? Who is going to be responsible for making recommendations and suggestions?
Yes.
What is the timeframe for making those recommendations and suggestions? When do we need to submit a extension for the moratorium to make sure that we have enough time to complete the work? So before we dive into those super interesting and contentious issues, I, I'm more comfortable when I, I understand the process and what it is that we want to achieve.
This whole workshop is about defining that process only.
Right.
And that's what we need to do, and so we need to-
It'd be helpful if you had some input, if we can, but the process for me is number one.
I totally agree, so.
I think in my memo that I sent-
Exactly what I was trying to start this whole thing with is, first of all, it's a workshop, we don't make decisions in workshops, I think we all understand that, we're just trying to set a direction, who does what to whom, and by when. And first one is the process, that absolutely has to be clarified, defined, recommendations as to what it should be, and that's, that's a major item, that's, that relates to ordinances or other regulations or whatever we have, we need to assign that somewhere to do some homework on that.
Yep.
And recommendations on who, how, and what should look at that portion.
Yeah, in my memo, I suggested that, I think you should task the harbor committee with it, I, I did include the copies of the changes, the proposed changes that the harbor committee proposed back in 2015, and, I mean, that wasn't that long ago, and they looked at some of these issues that were identified in, in the moratorium language, so I would kick it back to them to look at what they did in 2015, it's a whole new harbor committee for the most part, but what, what they did back then was, I think, pretty good, it's a pretty good document maybe to start with, and, and go from there. The timing, again, you mentioned this, we're 120, more than 120 days beyond the start of this moratorium, so we've got 60 days to work on that, you have to make reasonable progress, and if you're not making reasonable progress, then, you know, I think the town has some issues. So getting the harbor committee to work on it, I know that they started looking at it, piers at their last meeting was a discussion item, I would encourage you to send it to them, and certainly, there's no way in my, talking with the clerk today to get anything to voters for November, talking with Katrina today, I mean, I think everything has to be done by the end of July, she told me today.
Actually, it's mid-August.
What's happening?
See, actually, mid-August, but still, it's less than a month.
So as far as extending the moratorium, you can do that, the Select Board can do that by holding a, a public hearing, a one-week notice, and it's how you guys make that vote?
We'll, we'll take care of that administrative one, I'm not worried about that.
I think you should do that.
Yeah, but that's, that's the easiest one on the list, honestly, I understand the recommendation there, but back to, I guess in my mind, I'm, you know, I-
You should probably keep your microphone closer, based on feedback we've received in the past.
Thank you, Allison. My, my, just to throw out a question, I, I know the harbor committee did this work in 2015, but they're part of the defined process as it is today, they're kind of close to the forest, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have, the, the whole process includes harbor committee, planning board, and the Select Board, and I'm just wondering, is there any, any entity we could utilize that might be more independent and look at the whole thing from a perspective of what makes sense compared to other towns, compare it to, you know, the things we normally do, but this, we're not the only town that has to approve piers and docks.
No, I mean, I think, I mean, I guess I would go to the harbor, to the ordinance itself, and see what the harbor committee section says and what their, what their job is.
Right.
But I would, I mean, I think they're the ones that know the harbor more than anybody.
Yeah, I'm not talking about knowing the harbor, I'm talking about the process. I'm talking about the process here. I mean, if some, let me throw a wild example, which I don't approve, but let's say that the process should be the Planning Board review it only and the Select Board just votes on the recommendation of the Planning Board. That's it. Nothing else. Why would we, why are we, I don't want us to get in the mud of what it's been and try to tweak it rather than look at it. We have a chance to look at this fresh right now. That's just my opinion. Allison.
Yeah, I'm going to go first.
Allison, your turn.
So I really appreciate that you included the 2015 stuff because that's sort of the essence of what caused me to want to bring this up is I saw all of that work that was done and, you know, at the time, the Planning Board and the Harbor Committee reached unanimous recommendations between the two of them, which is a monumental achievement in town government. And I watched as a two to three Select Board vote kept some of those changes from going to voters. And to me, I had sort of seen what I considered to be like the perfect process evolve where there was significant participation and two groups of highly qualified, you know, volunteer committees reached a recommendation and the Select Board said, "Oh, no, we're not going to let the voters vote on whether we want to prohibit new peers in the Outer Harbor." And so I think there's a lot, you know, a lot of those recommendations from 2015 did go to voters. And so I think definitely starting with having the Harbor Committee be a big part of this, of course, makes sense and that if we could try to find a way to categorize some of these different areas, obviously, you know, the moratorium painted a very broad brush and it's a big, it's a big thing. We had that whole Sherman's Cove situation with just, you know, the floats and whether a float and a dock counts as a permitted structure and all of that. Just that issue alone is going to take a little bit to digest. So if we were to separate out, you know, floats in that section of Sherman's Cove as one task, that maybe the coastal harbor as one task and the Outer Harbor as one task. And to your point, Bob, I do think it would be nice to involve another group, some. The Conservation Commission is one that comes to mind in the past. Like harbor access points has been something that's been shuttled around between different committees. It's been great to see the Harbor Committee take interest in that recently. In the past, it had been the Conservation Commission that did that. And I do see these issues as really like intimately intertwined, the public access part and the peers. So if there's a way to incorporate the Conservation Commission or, you know, some outside entity like the Soil and Water Conservation District or something because...
I will, I will say in the...
Title zone and it has a value beyond recreational.
The ordinance that I mentioned that said, the site plan review section that says the Planning Board can take comments from the Harbor Committee, it also says, "And other committees or entities such as the Conservation Commission." So that might be a, you have the Harbor Committee handle it, but get the Conservation Committee to join in, have those be open meetings and, you know, even Planning Board members could attend. What generally...
Harbor Committee could identify some areas for input from the Conservation Commission or some other...
I do think the, separating them into two kind of, you know, the coastal and the Outer Harbor is probably a good way to start, to have this group start working on things. I think it's important to note too, and this is, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but riparian property owners, property owners that have waterfront property, thereby by state law, they are allowed and we cannot prohibit them from having a mooring. And I think that's important. And I just say that because ramps, a float on a mooring is considered a mooring.
That's so interesting because when I made that argument about Sherman's Cove, I was very much rebutted by...
But I just think it's important because to have that discussion, you know, you're certainly going to have moorings and floats in the Outer Harbor.
Not in Sherman's Cove, we're not in the section of Sherman's Cove. There are no moorings allowed.
In Sherman's Cove?
In a certain section, in a certain section.
Property owners have the right and it even says in our ordinance and in state law that property owners have a right to have a mooring. And I think that's something that the Harbor Committee should tackle as well.
Well, when you say separate coastal and outer, what do you mean separate? The different committees is looking at different...
Not different committees, but just focus, there's so much, I mean, the Outer Harbor is very different than the Coastal Harbor.
Yep.
And the impacts are very different. The impacts on recreational, you know, people that want to walk down and fish along the, you know, along the shore. It's very different. You can't really get there out in the Coastal Harbor that easy. Sherman's Cove, you can. And Sherman's Cove, the low tide is what it is out there. I think everyone knows what low tide is out in...
Well, it's rising all the time, but yeah.
So is what we're talking about, tasking different committees with precise tasks and giving them guidelines on how to tackle those tasks like making sure that the public access is maintained or certain guidelines to help them through the work they need to do? Because again, it's, and it's a human instinct, we want to solve the problem right away.
It's not going to happen.
But it's not going to happen here. So I'm really interested in understanding which sections of the moratorium we're going to give and...
Well, first of all, we've got to realize that the...
What are we trying to...
First of all, we're still talking about who is going to be the entities. We've got to take one piece at a time. We've got to get confused, like I am. That doesn't take much. But who, what entity or entities are going to look at what scopes of work? Now, as far as what criterion they may have to look at, that's part of what they should be deciding too, what's important. This is, this is for them to provide us information that we may want to contemplate, including public access, and other elements that are important to the time of Camden. And that's part of this whole, and when there is, second piece of that is when there is an application for a pier or a dock, not a mooring, I would agree, that's probably correct, but can be clarified, that what is the process they recommend the town go through based on their analysis?
Yeah, so again, I'd still focus on the Harbor Committee being the lead on it and that they reach out to the, you know, and this is the guiding document. The moratorium ordinance to me is the guiding document for them on what their task is, right? We've identified and town voters voted on this moratorium and these were the issues that were identified and the Harbor Committee can go through that and when there's an issue, reach out to the Conservation, newly reconstituted Conservation Commission, right?
Yes, we do.
Reach out to them, reach out to the chair and say, "Hey, this is what we're working on. We've got to resolve these problems or look at this and we think that you can provide valuable insight on this section."
Yeah.
Reach out to the Planning Board the same, reach out, you know, for help, for assistance, for guidance and if they need to reach out to the Soil and Water Conservation District for whatever reason they can, you can also reach out to consultants too. I mean, they can use, you know, there's a lot of people that have a lot of interests here and that bring a lot to the table.
I would agree. I would agree. That's the kind of structure we're defining right now.
And I think you got to, I mean, I think you have to do that in a hurry and I think the Harbor Committee is ready to do it. And, you know, because you have to be making reasonable progress on this moratorium and we're well into it.
We know the objective. Let's stay off that for a minute. But I think we need to define that now and we can't, it's probably going to morph during the process and we're going to define everything today. This could probably, maybe even iterations where, let's say the Harbor Committee is leading and they can bring a status to the Select Board and explain where this is going and who's, and how they're organizing it, but go ahead, Allison.
I mean, the moratorium language is obviously why we're here, but the result of this is going to be most likely when the, in conjunction with the expiration of the moratorium will be ordinance revision that will be put before voters. So if we're doing, if there happen to be things that relate to this that are not, you know, not mentioned for some reason in that moratorium, sometimes what I see committees do is they, there's some like important and sort of agreed upon issue that comes up and then they, that's connected and then they get told, "Oh, no, sorry, that's off limits" for some reason or another, when really it feels like it shouldn't be. So if there's, I think they should be, there's nothing to say that an ordinance revision that mentions, you know, that isn't something mentioned in the moratorium couldn't also...
Agreed.
No, they're parallel tests.
That does my point about the process too, to clarify that even better.
Right. So assume we do that and the Harbor Committee can make recommendations about, you know, what pieces of pie they want to talk to, and they definitely should involve the Conservation Commission because in my mind, Sophie, the Conservation Commission is the one that's going to look at public access and those kinds of things that may be more communal versus the...
I mean, the Harbor Committee, I think it's awesome that the Harbor Committee is looking at that public access part too.
It's all about just getting a fresh look and a fresh defined process going forward. So we can do that. Two, just from my perspective, one of my confusions about the moratorium is I have no idea what is even potential given current regulations for future peers and docks in the areas, especially the Outer Harbor. I keep hearing that there may be only a couple of possible alternatives out there or is there 100? I don't know.
I think there may be the ability, and if you're referring to the Outer Harbor from Marine Ave all the way around, around the...
And I don't want to define today, I just want to know what that is.
Yeah, I believe that there's a possibility that we could get one more and I think Will Gartley who's here, I think, has looked at this quite, quite a bit on how many peers could happen in the area, so.
Or rebuilding of existing peers to make them longer. There's a lot of, this is what they say every time, to me, is not ban anything. It's all, it's not a big deal.
But my point is to the physical infrastructure is part of this process of reviewing for the moratorium. I think I'm recommending the Board, we have some information fed back to us about any future, what can be accomplished in the Outer, Coastal Harbor is kind of easier to find.
I would tend to agree with you.
Yeah, but the Outer Harbor is the core of our harbor. And yes, new peers, yes, I'd like to know where the possibility of those could occur and/or to Allison's point, anything else that may be affected by existing peers. Can they extend them? Can they, just so we know, what are we dealing with? Are we dealing with a bag full or are we dealing with a thimble full? I don't know.
I think you're dealing with a thimble full, but I...
I'm not asking your opinion, I want the data.
The Harbor Committee did start looking at this already and I, and, you know, I think just let them continue down that road.
Which they did extensively in 2015. So I'd say that is, why do we just throw out the work that has been done in the past when they did so much work and then it wasn't...
Not suggesting throwing that out and that's why I included it and I think the Harbor Committee would utilize that as well as the moratorium ordinance to say, "Okay, this was clearly what was just voted on by voters in June of this year. There's concern here. These are the concerns that the town folks have." And a prior Harbor Committee not that long ago proposed some changes, so let's meld those things together and see.
Nobody's throwing out the draft of 2015.
Correct.
And Sophie, what she wants to talk, all I'm saying is at some point, this Select Board or a future Select Board is going to have to make a decision about the moratorium, right? And I think it's very important for the public and myself included now to understand what the issues are at hand physically by looking at a drawing, by looking at a sketch that says, "This is probably the places where they could be added, this is a place to..."
I want to show all the floats too and all the ramps and all the...
I want to show everything. So if people understand, well, for example, a congested harbor. I mean, you know, I boat, but I'm not an expert in Sherman's Cove and I'm not an expert in the Outer Harbor. But that, I'm just, the physical information done in a sketch needs to be developed and needs to be part of this homework, as it were. I don't care, I don't think the Harbor Committee is going to do the drawing. I don't think they could, but somebody, somebody, somebody's going to sketch, somebody should. And we shouldn't preclude floats, we shouldn't...
I mean, the town might build.
Anything the town might build, the Sherman's Cove?
That sounds like a fun game.
I should say steamboat. You know, those kinds, we need to know.
Yeah.
That's a separate task that should be in there.
This is focusing on residential right now, but again, like Allison said, as this thing goes, they can propose other changes in the ordinance as well.
That's correct.
But people building these private floats interferes in some cases with the town building something.
I guess what I'm asking is do we need to invoke a consultant to do that part or not?
I'm not sure we really need to do that. I think we could probably work with the Harbor Committee, myself and existing resources that we have.
That should be part of the task. All right. Sorry, Sophie.
No, that's fine. So I am the Harbor Committee liaison and we've started looking into, actually, the Harbor Committee has started looking into the moratorium. And the feedback I have received from Josh and the Harbor Committee is really to define their task very clearly because it's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I think that one of the things that we need to work with the Harbor Committee is to make sure that we task them with things that are achievable and realistic and within their, the scope and the competencies of the Harbor Committee. And also count on them to clearly tell us, you know, at what junction do they need help from whom and to do what. And the way I've been listening to the conversations so far, my understanding is that the Harbor Committee will be, will take the lead in this process and inform us, you know, of the progress and how, what kind of support they need. But Bob, and please contradict me if I'm wrong, but Josh is here. Maybe we should have him express, you know, take the floor?
I thought he had all the answers already.
So if it's, I don't know the protocol, so if that's, okay.
Josh does as well, so no, he has to, he needs clarity.
I know, he always knows.
This is the time to ask it. If there's any buzz and it's bound to be, feel free, Josh, just to raise your hand and let us know or anybody else for that matter. Because we don't, yeah, one of the biggest problems is leaving a lot of this rhetoric and then everybody's like, I think they said...
I think they said X, yeah.
Let's check the video. That's not...
We can revisit it too as a Select Board at some point. I don't think it needs to be now or never or just like, sorry. I mean, it's going to be a conversation going on.
No, I would absolutely...
Like what you said, Sophie, I'm just saying to Bob.
But I don't want to have the next Harbor Committee meeting starting like, "So Sophie, what you guys, what did you guys meet, mean at the workshop?"
Right, I think they should have been at the table with us, that's...
Josh?
Yes.
As we all argue over whether Josh wants to speak or not.
We should continue talking about you in the third person. It's so nice, right?
That's right. Let's ask Josh. So, no, to Sophie's point, I think that is exactly what the Harbor Committee needs is clarity on scope of what you would like us to review and in what order. So I can tell you that the moratorium is very broad, has a lot to it and we did review it at the last meeting. Looking at that is going to be a large task. Bringing in public access and other things as part of that review, I think is going to be too much, certainly in 60 days, I can tell you that. So I think we need to be very clear about asking the Harbor Committee to review the pieces of the, of the moratorium and developing data about the number of potential peers, et cetera, everything that's specified in that moratorium. But at the, at the risk of being a little too black and white, keeping it pretty focused initially on the moratorium and identifying the problem that the moratorium was passed by the voters to address, to say, "Okay, we talked about it in, you know, the language talks about the threat and all of that. What is the threat? Let's, let's really get all of that data." I think that's achievable in relatively short order. Going much beyond that, I get a little like, we need to be careful of the expectations.
I think your description of prioritization is correct. Yeah, I don't know what will be done in 60 days or not. It's going to be, that's a short, it is a summer, it is a challenging time for people. But however, that's one of the reasons why you have the ability to reach out to other committees like Conservation Commission to say, "Are there elements in here that we should recommend to the Board or whatever for consideration?"
So the moratorium identifies public access as part of the threat. So it concerns me to hear you say that that might be too...
Does it actually say public access? I didn't find that.
Whereas, whereas structures such as peers, docks, floats, float and float may interfere with public access too and the use of the intertidal zone and harbor waters and...
I got you, Sophie.
But it just goes on to, so yes, it definitely refers to that.
But I think what Josh means, because he's here, but he can't really speak right, is that tasking the Harbor Committee with the public access piece of work might be too much for them to undertake. So we need to have another entity take care of it.
To review the impact.
Yeah, yeah. That is not, is not...
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, do you want to...
No, I think that's exactly right. I mean, we can look at the impact that these peers, floats and ramps, et cetera, will have. I didn't realize that it actually specified that public access was a threat identified in that moratorium, so I think that does open it to some degree. But I think looking at the bandwidth that the Harbor Committee has, I think if we're going to look at public access points around the entire Outer Harbor, that's...
I just thought it was, no, I was referring to that as a...
I just thought it was, no, I was referring to that as a, as a separate thing that I know you've been talking about a little bit in the Harbor Committee and it was...
In Sherman's Cove, just in Sherman's Cove.
Just in Sherman's Cove.
The Harbor Committee is acting as the orchestra leader, and if the orchestra leader needs more trumpets and trombones, they can reach out for that.
Yes.
Okay, and they should, and I think one asset is Conservation Commission, I just mentioned others about, I don't know what the bandwidth is about, you know, if you needed help with sketches, if you needed help with some of the pieces, they're all consultants, you need to raise the flag.
Yep, and I think I will, I see Will Gartley here today, and I know he knows a lot about this, so I would ask if we could include him as well as someone who has reviewed a lot of this.
Well, I think I need to find the task first now, much detail we're getting into.
I mean, Will knows lots about this, obviously, but I do think there's somewhat of a conflict of interest when somebody's employed to design and explain floats, I mean, that's a substantial part of the business, and so...
But they might have data, I think it'd be up to the Harbor Committee to make sure that they, that we, we protect that and guard against that conflict of interest. But if someone has data that they, you know, that is at their fingertips, then I think it would be sort of negligent to sort of...
But we should also consider bringing, I like the idea of the reminder that it is okay to use consultants sometimes, and that that could be helpful to the Harbor Committee that, but maybe also some consultants, like in terms of what's being done in other, other places and...
You can consult anybody you want to consult, but I think, but if you need to reach out to a consultant and it's going to cost some money, you should raise the flag, of course, if we can get it approved. That's, that is an issue.
But also, I agree with that, but just a reminder that hiring consultants takes time.
What?
It takes time.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, again, we need, I think, I think the first task of the Harbor Committee is to create like a work plan, and I'm happy to, you know, as your liaison, I'm happy to work with you on that at the next meeting, and then start reaching out immediately to other constituencies that should give us some, give the Harbor Committee some input, and then we'll have a better idea maybe if we need consultants.
That's a good idea, that's a good, that's a good data point, and maybe at that point, because we do have a relatively short fuse on the current moratorium, we may give us an idea of, and you shouldn't use 60 days as a gun, because we may have to extend the moratorium, but we need that data.
I think we already said we have to.
We're going to have to extend it.
There's no, there's probably no doubt, but...
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we need to make, as Jeremy said, some legitimate, reasonable progress towards it, so in the next 60 days, that's what we need to demonstrate, otherwise, frankly, I think you're going to have a hard time extending it because we haven't done that part of it. So obviously, that's a, that's a lot of work to do in 60 days, but I think we can, using and gathering all the data points that we can, I really think that's probably what the first 60 days is going to be, is largely data gathering, talking to consultants, talking to the other, you know, getting the other committees involved, using the 2015 recommendations or looking at those, I'm a little cautious of putting those in front of the Harbor Committee and saying, did you like these, you know, because that was, that was seven years ago, that's a completely different committee, and I don't want to prejudge anyone, I want us to be able to go into that review and say, okay, let's, this is one data set, this was a smart group of people that looked at this, but there was, you know, it wasn't a unanimous, obviously, forward since it didn't go forward, so.
Almost all of that actually did go forward, there was just a little tiny bit that the select board picked out instead.
It was two out of three, I mean, two approved and one didn't.
Right, so, and, you know, identifying which areas maybe it's, some things are very complicated for the public to be able to, to vote on, and they might, you know, it depends how you word it and all of these things, and some things are relatively simple and very easy for the public to understand, and we can, I think, look for opportunities to use them for guidance, you know, on, on certain issues to separating things out, but...
Are there any buckets we've missed besides, we discussed the process?
The process I'm starting to be happy with.
Yeah, starting to be, no, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the process of who approves what and when, and what documents and clarifications there, that's, that's one, it's not in the moratorium, but that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that the Harbor Committee can certainly look at, and the Planning Board, we can look at that too.
Yes, that's a bucket that we need to take a look at, that's one. Two is some of the information regarding the harbor, it's, I call it density, potential density, and how it relates to all the elements that density can involve, including public access. Is there any other piece of, of the equation that we're missing?
I don't think so.
I think what's going to come up is the public is going to want to know, like, what's the appropriate way for the public to provide input, and in the past, there's been like confusion about whether that's the job of like the Harbor Committee to try to solicit public input, or whether, and I've always kind of felt like, like the reason that we have committees is generally not for them to try to, I mean, of course, they're all getting public input all the time, just because we all live in the town, but that it's sort of their recommendation that we're looking for in some ways, and that it, it shouldn't just evolve into a mass public input outreach event where you're using your role as trying to figure out what does the public really want, although I also don't, I don't know how, I know that the public is going to want to provide input, so maybe that should come to us, and then we send it to them, or should it go to them, I don't know.
We will work out some way of having public input, but first of all, committee meetings cannot be closed to the public, they must be open to the public, however, on the other hand, with a lot of work to do, I know that in past experience, a committee can get overwhelmed by, I would start off initially with public input at the committee meetings, if you feel that you're seeing a trend and you recommend that we, we take, to Allison's point, maybe have a public hearing on the matter, we can certainly...
That's not really what I'm saying, like, a lot of people just want to be able to provide written input during, you know, should I, should we say...
What are you suggesting they send it to?
I guess I'm, I'm asking for...
I have the answer.
To Jeremy, to the, I mean, I think it's always okay to send public input to the select board, I...
Yeah, but that puts us in, that puts five of us in a role of having to...
I would send it to me, and then I would forward it off to the Harbor Committee.
All right, we'll start that way, go ahead.
Yeah, and I was thinking that, I was thinking that in the work plan, that we can also put like a couple of options where it would be a good time to have a public hearing, because we have to have public input, correct, to show, to demonstrate that we've made progress?
No, you need to just make progress, and however you decide you need to make, you make progress.
You have to have a public hearing to extend the moratorium.
Have a public hearing to extend the moratorium.
Yeah, there's no, this, don't, it's not over, it's not overreach on this thing about, we just haven't had this meeting we should have had two months ago.
All right.
Or a month ago. We approved it in June, but we could have had this earlier, but we didn't, and what, you know, it is what it is, and we're going to go forward with doing our activity, nobody's going to challenge it, we're talking about public input, I think it's a good point, we haven't submitted to Jeremy, and, and he can forward it to, well, certainly, and it's probably Jeremy and Sophie, because...
I'm the Harbor Committee liaison.
That way, well, liaison, that way our liaison's being informed and she...
I'll just forward things that people send to me, I'll forward them to you, but I'm not going to, I'm not comfortable telling people that they can't send stuff to the select.
No, of course not.
We're not telling anybody they can't, we're suggesting that the procedure be to Jeremy and Sophie, and if they want to send it to me too, I will forward it to them also, that's not a big deal. Anything else, Josh, that we can help you with?
No, I think it's fairly clear what we're, what we're taking on.
What we just did is we handed you an anchor on the vote and said, with no chain, let's jump over.
Pretty much.
But there is one last point, I mean, the Harbor Committee is working on some other things, so I think we should also address this and saying that for the time being, the priority is going to be working on the moratorium, knowing that the other things that, the other items that the Harbor Committee is working on might be delayed.
Yeah, there might be a few that are delayed.
Managing expectations.
The good news is we were, we knew this was coming, it was when the voters passed it, so we knew this is probably going to land with us quickly, so we were trying to finish up the Sherman's Cove analysis is the pressing one, so, and that one is, is pretty short, so that one shouldn't be, should be fairly simple, so we should be able to polish that off, I think, at the next Harbor Committee meeting quickly, and then...
Use that to support some of your work here.
We might, although that's, you know, Sherman's Cove, as you will learn, not to cut, not to cut ahead, but is a small part of the Outer Harbor, it's not the entire Outer Harbor, and is a very special piece, a very specific piece, so it is a piece though.
Great, Josh, thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Any other questions, Tom, do you have any other questions, items input?
Nope, thank you.
Jeremy?
Ethan, really disappointed this isn't going straight to the Planning Board, or...
You know, I'll come up real quick. Sure, sure. I was also going to say that the standards that are in the, for the, kind of like the, the physical, you know, review criteria, like length of the pier, width and height and those kinds of things, those are in the harbor ordinance, and they're cut and pasted into the shoreline zoning section of the ordinance, so I don't think the Planning Board necessarily should be working on zoning amendments to tweak that section, because let the Harbor Committee do that, and then we'll just make sure those get codified into the shoreline zoning section, but you may want the Planning Board to look at the review criteria that they have currently for site plan review for piers.
Yep.
Yes, that's a good...
That's a good point, Jeremy.
Throwing that out.
It's all my thunder, but, you know, sorry, Tom, yeah, I mean, I'm sitting in the back of the room and sort of wondering what I'm doing here, right, because it's, this really is, I believe, a Harbor Committee issue as far as the, the review of the harbor ordinance and the moratorium. The Planning, Planning Board is good at taking the ordinance and applying it to a project, that's, I mean, we also do planning, but that's really our core responsibility.
Sure.
And so when we get to this, this issue, the one question that I do have, and it's, it's just, it really is a question, but I know that the, there's confusion in the, in the ordinance as to the process, and we're saying we haven't been following it. What is the rationale for a select board essentially of veto power over, you know, prior decisions by both a committee and a, and a board? So that's a question you can look at and say, do we really need as a select board to be reviewing what the Planning Board has decided fits the ordinance, and then having veto power over that? And obviously, when we do send an ordinance amendment to you, we want you to look at it and then decide whether you're going to send it to the voters, this is a different type of situation, right? This is where we're just applying the law, the ordinance to a specific project.
Like you do on land permits.
In almost everything, so we don't, we don't send a subdivision review to the select board to say, hey, that's okay, we're going to approve that, so it's like a veto power that you don't really need. Your role, in my opinion, is to oversee and direct all of this stuff and the creation of the ordinance and how the moratorium works and how the ordinance is applied, but you're not, you don't necessarily need to be involved in the actual approval of individual pier projects, that's my personal opinion, but from the select, from the Planning Board position, we're happy to look at, as Jeremy said, the criteria that we actually have now and how those work, but I'd probably suggest that we wait until we see what they come up with, with the harbor ordinance.
Yeah.
Because that, those are the people we have on the ground with the expertise in this area, and, and, you know, from the Planning Board perspective, we don't have, you know, a particular dog in this fight, other than, you know, when the project comes up, we have to apply the law to it, and so we've approved piers.
I think to your point, that's why we were just trying to address it probably inadequately earlier, was we have an opportunity to look at the picture, and, you know, I, sometimes processes and morph over 100 years and they get kind of stuck under your nails, and that's just the way it is, but when you're, when you're evaluating it, you should evaluate absolutely everything, including what you just said, you know, what is the roles, responsibilities of various entities. I'm very curious to what other towns do, and not just here, and I know what they do in California, it's different, but I don't know what the rest of New England does, unarmed, Allison.
I mean, obviously, there are different categories of things, people can build a, build a house without ever having to go to the, to the Planning Board in most cases, and that's kind of, I see it as the way the, the ordinance was set up, there are different levels of, you know, things being like a big deal, I guess, in the eyes of the public for building a home, you get the code enforcement officer to, to sign off on that, then we have these other cases where Camden residents voting in the past have said, okay, if it's a building that meets the commercial building, we want that to go, the code enforcement officer and the Planning Board to go through this whole thing. And then there are these other really special categories, and I sort of take that as direction from, you know, past voters and past planning exercises where they want additional review, and they want the people that they've elected to be able to sort of be held accountable for evaluating things that are subjective, the criteria for the, for the piers, it all comes down to substantial impact or not substantial impact, and I think that the way that we define that over the years is, is different, something might not have a substantial impact on activity in the harbor in the eyes of, you know, one group 50 years ago, but today, using the harbor differently, something might constitute a substantial impact, so I guess that's sort of the way I see it.
But I think, again, you've got the, the Harbor Committee appointed by the select board, you've got the Planning Board appointed by the select board, and then you've got a veto power, now, I'm not sure of other situations where that exists, there may be, but I'm not clear on those, so it's just a question of just general process, it's not a question of whether you guys are the right ones to make the decisions, but that's just, it's just, it is odd that there's sort of a, I mean, and Bob pointed this out at the beginning, you've got two committees saying yes, yes to something, and then the select board saying no, like, you'd have to have some sort of feeling that something wasn't...
I mean, it's advisory, the committees are all advisory, that's, I mean, I'm...
The Planning Board is not advisory, though, I mean, we issued...
That's true, that's in some, it's an odd, yeah.
That's what's written in the ordinance, is, that's how it goes.
That's why I think go to the Planning Board after for site plan review, is part of my feeling, that when it goes to you guys, it is the final say.
And I saw, that, that does fall into what I'm saying, so that's not inconsistent, it's just a question of whether you feel like the Planning Board, I'm sorry, the select board needs to be involved in there, but the way it is now with them as a, with you as a veto power strikes me as odd.
That strikes me as odd too, there are a lot of things that are...
The decision on that matter will rest in the hands of the five select board members as far as the process goes, and, or a vote, or a vote, yeah, a vote, whatever the legislative entity we use, I hate passing the buck to the voters, because I think that's what we were elected for, to make, to make recommendations to the, our legislative body.
I think you would make a recommendation one way or the other and have the voters pass it.
Right, right, no, but excellent point, that was my point, we just want to be completely transparent, and we want the process looked at independently with eyes that, you know, and maybe utilizing how others do it or not, I mean, that's only a litmus test, but nothing, nothing should be off the table.
Yeah.
I, I agree with this, and I think there's a balance between the veto power of the select board in this instance, which I agree with you is odd, and managing public interest, because we are, it is relating to a public land, so I know it's, it's a hard thing, and on the other hand, I also don't want to be a select board that's rubber stamping, because there's no value, we're not adding value, so for me, the way I always look at processes is that in matters of public safety and public good, which is the case for the, managing the harbor, and that, make sure that every step we create adds value, that it's, we don't need a bureaucracy, we need, we need to make sure that public safety and security is ensured, that we protect the land that we need to protect, and that we add value. This would be the guidelines I would abide by.
And I agree with that, and I think that it goes back to sort of Allison's point where maybe we do have it turned upside down, and then, you know, that, the Harbor Committee as the sort of appointed committee, but not an acting board, you know, provides recommendations to the select board, select board review says, yep, this looks good, pass it to the Planning Board, that's fine with me if that's, if that's sort of the way you think that it should go. And again, this isn't really an issue of the Planning Board feeling like we don't have a say or anything like that, it's not, we're not feeling overstepped, I just, when I hear, I'm sitting in the back of the room, what's the discussion, it's just curious to me how it's turned on its head.
Well, remember, that's the way it's kind of defined, but in other cases, morphed to a different place for whatever reason, it happens, as I said, that happens all the time, especially in smaller towns and communities, so.
We are so used to the Planning Board being the final say, that it, that's what, it has felt very empty for it to come to the select board afterwards, because it's like we're overturning a decision of the Planning Board, it doesn't, it doesn't feel, there's something, there's something wrong with that, that it needs to go...
An ordinance recommendation, that's just a recommendation, and we want your, that's something that does require your oversight and approval to send to the voters, we understand that, but when there's actually a formal decision that's applying set standards, it's curious.
Yeah, it's been very awkward.
I totally agree with you, same thing, why are we vetoing something that was already, same criteria is approved by our appointed planning board?
It'd be a big waste of their time, so why are we wasting their time by having them do something first and then decide?
Well, it puts them in a lose situation, because we approved it all, and you guys, because you thought there was a tree in the wrong place or something, that you disapproved it, that doesn't make sense.
It was a substantial impact because of blah, blah, blah.
Good discussion, though, Ethan, good points, good points, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, thank you, this is...
Anything, Jeremy?